Welcome to this meeting, the Commission for Women, July 16, 2020. And could I ask first, could someone take minutes? Because Nicole can't be here tonight, our secretary. Can someone take notes? Okay, thank you, Joanne. And I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. So we have a quorum plus an extra person even. And I'd like to welcome everyone here, but especially our newest Commissioner, Sarah Jones. She is a teacher, lives here in Michigan City. She has six children. So she's kind of busy. And thank you very much for your interest in this and for serving here, the mayor's appointment for education, right? Is that right? Okay. Thank you, Sarah, very much for coming. And do we want to go around and introduce ourselves? Do you want to start? Oh, push the button. And if the green light is on, it means the mic is on.
My name is Sarah Jones.
I'm Fay Moore. I'm the representative from the Women's Commission for the NAACP.
I'm Veronica Martin. I'm a therapist with Mindful Minds and part of The Drifters.
I'm Albertine Allen, here for the Minority Health Partners of LaPorte County.
Yeah, good to see everyone. Joanne Anquist, representing Legal Women Voters of LaPorte County.
Thank you all. And I am Bonnie Schaff, the President of the Commission. And does everyone have a copy of the minutes? Or have you had a chance to review those? Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Fay Moore.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Those who approve, please say aye. Please say aye. Thank you. And those opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. The treasurer's report, I sent it all to you, but I didn't bother to make a lot of copies of it because it just says, as of yesterday, our balance is $19,737.51. There were no deposits. There were no disbursements. So our current balance is the same thing, $19,737.51. Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Question first.
Yes.
Did we not approve last time? I'm thinking we did not, did we?
Approve what?
The treasurer's report. I don't think we had a quorum last time.
No, we didn't.
Okay, I think we need to take care of that first, perhaps?
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we did not approve, oh, that works. We did not approve the minutes last time, or this treasurer's report.
We did not have one. She couldn't.
Okay, okay.
This is an update from, actually, from our March meeting. Nothing has changed.
Well, I'll move to approve the treasurer's report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And will all those approving say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Did you second, Fay?
Thank you. Okay. Next thing on the agenda, as you all know, Dahlia Ziegus had to step off of this commission when she was appointed or elected to the city council. And we now need a new vice president. And Joanne, I believe you had been working on that.
Yes. I have a nomination with approval, and I would like to go ahead. And of course, the first thing that comes to mind is Tiny. She has another name, but I've always called her that. And I am nominating her as vice president.
Okay. Thank you. And are there any other nominations from the floor? Okay. And Tiny, you're willing to assume this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It would be very nice to see you more and work with you more.
Well, I think it's good to have someone with so much experience, and she can add a lot to this organization, as she has in the past.
Right. How long have you been on the commission? Do you know? How many years?
I don't know. I think it's 2012. 2012?
Yeah. Wow, okay. Thank you very much for agreeing to serve in that role. And let's see, did you make a motion, Joanne?
Yes.
And was there a second?
There wasn't, but I'll second the motion for Albertine Allen to be the vice president.
Thank you. Okay. All those that approved, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Tiny.
Thank you.
Okay. A follow-up now to what our plans were and what happened in March of this year. That's Women's History Month. We had plans for events every Sunday afternoon for the month. And as it is, the first one that we had on March 8 ended up being, of course, the last one that we had. The events were at The Nest. We had entertainers for each week. And Esther, who owns The Nest, had purchased all of the food and enough for all four events, all except for the, you know, fresh veggies or something. But we were going to serve a lot of food. And it was going to be a fundraiser with the making and selling the sashes that you see over there. And as it is, we had a lot of food left over. There was not a real good turnout on March 8 because that was actually the beginning of COVID, when people started to stay home. And, you know, Fay, could you bring that over? Do you mind? And we'll show that, but this, thank you very much. Okay. And so we lost, we lost the, you know, I mean, some of the food spoiled, all of it now. None of it is still, can still be used. So, but all of the craft supplies can. And this is an example of the suffrage sash that we worked on that day. And we did not have an entertainer that was paid that day. So that's one good thing. So we didn't go to that expense. We were giving tributes to women, women's suffragists. So that's what has happened. We are, so we're out the money for the food that would have lasted to the, you know, to the other weeks. But other than that, we didn't have to pay any of the performers. Some of them were, one was from Chicago, one was from Michigan. And we did not have to pay them, even though we had, of course, had to cancel. And so that's what happened for Women's History Month. But also during that month, Barker Mansion had two events.
Before you get to that, could you tell us, how much was the food cost?
It came to, I think, yeah, it was around, it must have been around $300, including all of the craft supplies and everything. So it was pretty hefty, but we were, they were fundraisers, so. And then, but at the same time that month, Barker Mansion had two events scheduled. Thank goodness, they were at the beginning of the month for Women's History Month. And we were going to share the proceeds with them if we showed up and helped with the events. And we did that. And Sarah, the director of Barker Mansion, just notified me recently that our share is $370. So I was very happy about that. I didn't think it would be that much, but, so we'll be, we haven't received that check yet, but it's on the way. And let's see. So that was the income from that. The, oh, but the thing, I want to get back to the sashes. Esther and the group that were there on March 8 made more than 20 of these. And they were for fundraising. Do you want to go ahead and try to sell them next month, if there's any way we can? That's what we have to figure out.
Sell them for how much?
How much? Esther said the supplies would, it would have to be $10 to cover the supplies if we want to cover all the time that we spent working on them. It'd be more like $15.
So you're saying the total cost, the cost for someone to buy a sash would be $15?
Correct. If that's what you want, unless you want to go with $10, that would cover the actual expenses. So what do you think? How much should?
How many do we have?
20, at least 20, maybe more. Yes?
I can't speak for the League right now, but I think we would be most interested. And I think we'd also be willing for 15, but as I said, I can't really speak for the board at this point.
Okay. The League of Women Voters, I understand, is having an event, is planning an event on August 26, Women's Equality Day. And we could possibly sell these at that event if they decide to go ahead with that and if that's what we want to do. Does that sound good? Is that something you want to do?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Pardon?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay. We will, well, then, I'll let you know what we find out from the League when they make their final decisions about their plans. And then we'll have to figure out how to sell them. I think we'd have to be at the event that they have. So somebody would have to be there, at least one person would have to be there to sell them. So, okay, I'll let you know then as soon as the League makes final decisions and everything. So, okay, so we might still make some money on this, so that would be, that'd be good. Let's see. Okay. And coming up soon is, are two things, two things happening. One is that we have to give an annual report to the city council and the mayor. And since, for the previous year, and since Dahlia was the president last year, she has already prepared a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, and about the, all of the grants that we gave out last year with pictures and evaluations from everybody that received grants. And I'm preparing the part of the report that has to do with our current activities this year. And we are going, we are planning to get on the agenda for August 6. And that will be, no, I'm sorry, August 4, Tuesday, August 4, at 6:30 PM. I believe the city council will be meeting in this room. But it would be wonderful to have all of the commissioners there, that can be there. You won't have to talk necessarily unless you really want to, but you'll have to stand up and maybe be introduced. So, so please keep that in mind, get that on your calendar so you can consider that and so you can show up for that. And another thing that is happening, we're going to do that the same night. We had voted several months ago that we would ask the city council and the mayor for proclamation and a resolution commemorating the ratification of the 19th Amendment. And we could do that on the same night, at the same meeting on August 4, since we will all be there anyway. So the, what I am doing is, I'm drafting some clauses that can go into a resolution or a proclamation. And then it's just a draft, and then the city council or the mayor can change whatever they want, add whatever they want, make it their own. But there will be some suggestions from us of some of the things that we want to acknowledge in that. And I would like to include a clause about each of our two suffragists from this city, Naomi Anderson and a new one that I discovered recently by the name of Ziola Misener, M-I-S-E-N-E-R. She was, she has a big Wikipedia page, but she was a suffragist. She was one of the first women elected to the state legislature. She helped found the State League of Women Voters. And I just learned about her like a week ago. She's buried in Greenwood Cemetery and very close to the chapel. If you go there, you can, you'll find her grave easily. I put yellow and purple flowers on it already. And, but she is someone who we can, who deserves to be honored by us in addition to Naomi Anderson, suffragist who was born here in 1843 and was a very important figure in suffrage and civil rights and an excellent writer and orator. So we will be, I'll include paragraphs about them or clauses about them in the drafts of the resolution and proclamation. And Joanne, I believe you approached, did you approach the mayor about a proclamation several months ago?
I had it on, excuse me. Yeah, I spoke with the mayor as well as the council, and they were going to work together. But as it turned out, it was, it was quite nice, actually. The council went ahead, wanted to introduce me that night. And it went very well then. And then, of course, as you recall, the mayor came to our party that we had that after, few afternoons after that. And so we had everybody involved. I don't know this year what they planned to do, but it was, yeah, the attempt was to work together last time. I don't know how busy their schedule is, but very cooperative. In fact, no problem with any of the groups I worked with, LaPorte, you know, and Westville and the commission, everybody was very, very eager to assist.
Okay. We are just concerned with the Michigan City, city council and our mayor here, but, and League of Women Voters had approached all of the town and county councils too. But for this, we will just approach the city council and mayor. And I am still working on a draft of the resolution proclamation. I'll have that ready. Hopefully by Monday, I'll send it to all of you for your input into it. And then after we decide on it, one of us, and maybe we'll figure out on email, which of us will approach both the city council and the mayor. For the city council, since one of them, one or more has to introduce it, I thought it might be nice to ask all of the women that are on the city council, or do you want to stick with just one, or what do you want?
That's basically what happened the last time. Angie came forward, and then the other women were with her. But it was, it was, it was just a unanimous, very warm welcome. And, yeah, very, very well done, I thought.
Okay. Okay, good, good. Does that sound good to everyone then, this plan of ours? Or that? Okay. And just be sure to plan to attend the meeting that night on August 4, city council meeting. And do you want to invite or include other women's organizations in the city to, you know, all of us sign on that this is what we're asking for? Or do you want to just have it the Women's Commission? Anyone have an opinion? If not, I can mention that in the email when we're getting closer to having it ready.
We wouldn't have enough room.
We have to do it all before August 4, but that still gives us three weeks at least.
If we go on a social distance, we wouldn't.
Pardon?
I said, if we want a social distance, this room wouldn't be big enough to invite a lot of organizations.
Oh, that's true. Oh, yes. Okay, I see.
To remember that.
Okay. Okay, I see that. Yep.
Well, but if it's a city council meeting, it wouldn't be here. Is that correct?
It's going to be here.
It's going to be here? Okay.
It will be here. Yes, it will be here. He's saying that there. Okay, well, I'll, we'll have to finalize all the details of that then in an email, but, but we're going ahead, we had voted on this several months ago to go ahead and have a, and obtain, try to obtain a resolution and a proclamation. So we'll just finish it, and I'll send it to everybody, and then that will just be presented to them for their input. Okay. Next thing, does anyone have any questions so far? Anybody?
I do. The two names that you mentioned off was Ziola Misener?
Yes.
Is she from Michigan City? Is that, is that who we're knowing? People from Michigan City?
Yeah, she is one of the people from Michigan City. She was, she was born in southern Indiana, but she lived her, here her entire adult life and was buried here.
And Naomi Anderson is the other?
Naomi, Naomi Anderson was born here in 1843. She lived here until 1868, which ended up being almost half of her life. And then she just overnight became a public figure nationally.
Okay.
Was, and was a very important person in, in the suffrage movement. Next thing, we should go, I forgot something here under new business. And that is that we've had a request for a change in the time that we meet. So what do you, what does everyone have?
I think I was the one that suggested a change in time. The winter hours, it's dark at 4:00. And we're all females, and I don't feel safe and comfortable leaving home at 5:00 when it's already dark. So I thought we could move the meeting to 3:00 o'clock. I don't think any of us have a regular job where we are not, except for the school teacher.
Yeah, the earliest I can get into town, back into town, is 5:00.
I didn't hear you.
The earliest that I can get here would be 5:00.
Well, I don't know what to say about that. I still feel that 5:00 is too late for us to start a meeting. And sometimes we didn't get out until like 7:00 during the wintertime, and it gets very dark by 5:00. And I don't think it's very safe for us to be out and about. That's my opinion.
Okay. What does everyone say?
Is there, is there a way we could have maybe like a security guard or somebody there? Is there a way we could have a security guard or someone when we get off that would make sure that us ladies get to our cars safely at that time if everyone can't meet earlier?
Another idea would be if you'd be willing to, for to ride with one of us who lives somewhere close to you, so that you wouldn't have to drive.
She doesn't see well at night. She lives right around the corner.
I'm, I'm not too far from you currently.
We're getting up in age, and it is a problem for us.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, what do you want to do about changing?
I guess you don't have to make a decision right now. Think about it and see what we could come up with first.
Okay. We'll try to figure something out. Okay. Okay, and, but for now, it will remain 5:00 on the third Thursday of the month. Next thing, we heard a report from Janet Block last month about the Well Behaved Women exhibit celebrating 100 years of women's suffrage that's on at Lebesnik Center for the Arts right now. And we are one of the co-sponsors of that. So our name is in big print on all of the advertising, promotion about it. And I've already gone to see the exhibit and would recommend it to everyone. And Janet had offered last month that if we wish to, we can have a private tour time just for our commission, just for the commissioners. Or we could have a, or we could have a virtual tour on, you know, on internet or whatever. What would you like to do? The exhibit is on until October 23.
Well, I think we should find out about you, you know, what, if you can get there at a certain time, or if we're.
They are open, they would do it for us. We could have it during the day or evening. Sorry.
I've also been to see the exhibit. It is beautiful. It's awesome exhibit. I recommend that you go see it if you can't see it as a group to go, you know, even individually. And the young lady that did the tour, I mean, that information about the quilt that's up there is awesome. And, and then they also had that scream, the lady that did the scream interviewed over 400 women and had, also did some type of class with the women. And then at the end of the class and everything, then they had all the women scream and take a picture of them screaming. And she has over 400 on the wall upstairs at the Lebesnik Center. And it's, and just so happened the day that I went for the tour, she was there, the lady that did the exhibit and talked about it, and we could ask her questions. And it was very emotional, very, very good. I also did the Thursday virtual cross stitch class, and that was fun. And we learned how to cross stitch virtually. And so that was a good, good show also.
Okay. Well, pardon?
What time do they, what time do they open?
I think they open at 10:00 AM, and they're normally open until 5:00 PM. But she said they could even do an evening tour for us, since we're a co-sponsor, if we want. There's free admission to the center all the time, so. Does anyone want to have a private tour for just us? Veronica? Okay. Anybody else?
I was actually looking into going, but I would, I would like to have people accompany with me. So I don't know how that would work if we did, if I went to a private one. So I would be going, but with others, accompanied, if I could include them.
Six, probably.
My girls. Yeah. Five girls.
We limit the groups to 20.
Yeah. Well, there are only eight of us, so.
Yeah, I looked at it.
She limits the groups to 20.
I think last week I was looking at it, the details.
Okay, well, then I will contact Janet then and find out, you know, what the dates and options. Is that what you want me to do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I will do that and email you with that information. And we can, we can go from there. You won't have to attend it if you don't want to because of social distancing, but it is a small group and a kind of a. But it is a small group and a kind of a large room that it's in, so, okay. Okay, the poetry contest inspired by Naomi Anderson is still on hold. I was waiting to find out what the schools were doing and now I'm still kind of waiting to see. But as we learn more about the schools and see what their schedules are, I'll let you know.
The schools are opening August the 12th. They're giving, she's giving the parents the option of virtual learning as well as homeschooling. Or they can come to the class, to the school.
Yeah, okay. Okay, do you think that this coming semester would be a good time to have the contest? And Sarah, what this is, is a poetry contest for K through 12 students in Michigan City, public and parochial schools and homeschooled students. And inspired by Naomi Anderson, we have it all prepared. It's ready to hand over to the schools, but, you know, but it got stalled here. So do you want to, do you think that we should try to do that this fall? Or you might have a real good handle on whether, or should we wait until next spring? Or is it just going to be a bad time or a really good time to do something like this with homeschooling?
Put your mic on.
There, I gotta agree now. I think it's a really good time, quite honestly. I think, I think the teachers would be delighted to have something else to focus on, something that the kids could work on outside of school or in school. And it, and really Naomi, we didn't talk very much about her, but she is such an exciting person to learn about. And I think she will be just, just a wonderful person to focus on for our children.
Okay, okay, does that sound okay? Does that sound like something we should do?
Yeah, I think it would be a, a good time just like Joanne was saying. Just some, a little bit of positivity in all the craziness would be something to look forward to possibly for the kids.
Okay, okay, well, we have the materials and we have, you know, a description of Naomi Anderson for, one for K through three, I think, and one for, you know, and for different age groups. And, okay, does anyone want to be in charge of contacting the schools to go ahead with this? I've prepared all of the materials, but I know this, I'm, I'm getting snowed under. It would be, and it's all, it would all be on, by email. Everything would be by email?
I can do that if you'd like.
Pardon?
I can do that if you'd like.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, I'll get you all the information about it and I'll, well, I'll email it to you and send an email to everybody so we know where it is. Thank you very much, Sarah, on your first, your first meeting to volunteer for that. Thank you. I just want to say a word about the Preserving Women's Legacy Grant from Indiana Humanities. Michigan City Main Street Association applied for that last month. And Indiana Humanities has not yet announced who the winners are, so. Anyway, so I'll let you know when we find out the answer to that.
I just wanted some clarification. Is Sarah just contacting MCAS? Or are we looking at the other school systems in the, in the area?
I think we would stick with Michigan City for, at least.
Well, the public school system, are you saying, not the parochial or?
Public and parochial and homeschool students.
Okay, okay, so that's what I wanted to clarify. I'm going to keep you busy, Sarah.
Okay, any, any questions, anything about any of this? Okay, the last time we met, well, not last month, but the time before that was February. And we were planning a big event for Women's Equality Day. Like we do every year, we have a big luncheon with an important speaker. And we were planning that. It was going to be held September 1st, I believe, this year at Lebesnik Center for the Arts. But last month, we talked about the fact that it probably won't happen. Does anyone want to go ahead with it now? Is there anything different that you think that would work? We've usually had, you know, between 60 and 80 people there. And so it would be, we couldn't do it that way this time because that would be way too crowded for that building. So we could do something virtual instead, if you want to do that. I thought we could at least put tributes to the suffragists on our webs, on our webpage. We could do that. And, and then we're getting the resolution and proclamation and those are, that's big. That's big, a big event for, for a city commission to do, I think it is for ours.
Well, Bonnie, if, if we're going to look at something different, I think we need to develop a committee for that.
Okay.
You know, and, and we're not going to be able to decide tonight on all of that. It's, it's very difficult since we really can't guess what things are going to be like. But certainly we're not, it's not going to be the way it would.
That's right. I forgot. We had a committee for this. We met in February, I think, right before, well, not long before we had to stop meetings. So does anyone want to volunteer to be on the committee to plan, to plan an event for, around August 26th?
I'll volunteer to be on that committee, but I would go with the one suggestion that you had about putting something on the website since we cannot meet in large groups. And we could put information out there about the information that's going to be on the website. So, you know, I'll volunteer if somebody else wants to help.
Yeah, and after the resolution and proclamation are adopted, we could put those on there too, you know, and at least have that much.
I suggest we put something on there about a woman each month. You know, I mean, you know, it wouldn't be just this, this particular month, but every month we could celebrate someone. There are enough of us females around.
Well, yeah, yeah, that is a good idea. Do you want to lead that project?
I will volunteer with Joanne's help.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tiny.
And that was for August, the month of August?
Yeah.
That's next week sometime.
Okay, okay, yes.
So, so, so you're saying for the month of August, for the Women's Equality Day events, just to do a different woman each day, I mean, each week or something like that?
Each, Tiny, what are you?
I suggested that we go ahead with the suggestion that she made. Whoever the women were that we were going to celebrate, we'd put it on our, our page, our page. But every month after that, we should celebrate a female for something. So that we would have something for whatever else we're doing, plus a female on there each month. That we're celebrating what they brought to the table.
That's a very good idea. Yeah, every, so every month it will be a different woman, different female.
The women already picked out, correct? Did you have the females already picked out for Equality Day? So we're going to celebrate them that way because it cannot meet. Too dangerous.
Are you, so are we also going to try to do something? Since we can't have the big luncheon, are you, are we trying to do something virtually there? You know, where we could share, you know, it could just be us, but someone's doing something, maybe deciding the proclamation or?
You know, we had a speaker lined up that was coming to Michigan City Public Library the end of March. She was a professor, history professor at Indiana University in Bloomington. And of course, that had to cancel. And we had discussed here at, must have been the June meeting, about trying to see if she could do something. You know, if she could do something virtually or whatever. Do you want me to try to pursue, or actually, that's something the committee should decide when the, as soon as the committee meets. And considering the size of our commission, the committee may be almost everybody. I don't know, don't know if that'll happen. But we do announce that for open door reasons and everything. So, okay, well, then we'll have to decide on a date and then announce that and then make the decisions about something that we could do for August 26th. And, and then, you know, yeah, and follow up on what Albertine is doing.
Bonnie, if I may?
Okay.
Bonnie? I just wanted to point out what, what the League did. And it kind of opened my eyes to all the possibilities. There are, there's a great deal available already on YouTube. And it, this is all free. It's not difficult, but there are some very fine speakers. There are also some very fine speakers right in the area. We talked about Bloomington, but also South Bend. And some of these, and they're women that I'm thinking of, are quite willing to try and do what they can. And so it might be a virtual meeting. It might be something that's already on YouTube. But we're talking about free in most cases and, and they're excellent speakers, outstanding.
Okay, does that sound good then?
I guess what I was thinking of is just doing a, I mean, I've seen so many, during this time, I've seen so many different things virtually that you can just like put together a, a program or something and have a speaker, I mean, with the social distancing. Maybe a speaker, maybe someone that's a poet or different things like that. And it can be a very nice virtual event.
Yeah, okay, okay, good idea.
So you could do like, hey, like a slideshow and have those videos of those speakers embedded to automatically play at certain parts of the slideshow. Like, is that what you're thinking?
You could do it that way or you could have, I mean, if we have a limited number and let's just say a setup like where we are now, they could stand, you know, with social distancing and recite what they're saying and have it virtual, you know, I mean. It, it can happen so many different ways. We can be so creative. But it can still happen with the people that we have here in Michigan City.
Yeah, yeah, really, really, okay, okay. Good, good suggestions here and so we'll need to meet and explore that further within the next week or so, if we can, because of the timing on this. Okay, is there anything else that anyone wants to discuss about Women's Equality Day events? Or anything in August? Okay, okay, well, I have one final item. This didn't make it onto the agenda because this just happened today, but I received, I don't know if any of, any of you received this, but I received a, an email from the U.S. Department of Labor, the Women's Bureau of the U.S. Department of Labor. And they're asking, they're seeking, they're seeking public input and public comment on the effectiveness and impact of paid family leave on women and children. And they're hoping to learn about the effectiveness of current paid leave programs in the country and the impact that access to or lack of access has on, on women and families. And so I think it would be very important for us as individuals and perhaps even as the commission for women to respond to that and give some, maybe do some research into it. And then unless, unless.
Do you have copies of that? Did you bring copies of that with you?
Yes, I'll email this directly to you. They have not yet announced the actual period for comments, but that will appear in the federal register. And there's a link on this, what I'll send you, that will announce when they open the, the public comment period. And then it'll be open for 90 days, so, so, but that's something that we can all respond to individually and.
What, you said the Women's Bureau of the Department of Labor?
Of the U.S. Department of Labor. So I think it's a positive sign that they're, you know, at least researching that and looking for the most effective programs too in the country.
Well, there is some pending legislation, so that's part of it too.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, I will email that to everybody here. And, but it's on the U.S. Department of Labor website, on the U.S. government website. Well, do we have any, any comments from commissioners?
This one, and Bonnie's heard this already. I'm really excited about this. Not that I wasn't about Naomi. Naomi was almost too good to be true when we started to find out about her absolutely exciting situation. But this next person, Ziola, considering her impact on the state, not just the area, but the state, and considering when she lived and considering that she's from Michigan City, I strongly think we're going to see a major connection with the advent of the League of Women Voters of Michigan City. When I first moved here, that's what we had, League of Women Voters of Michigan City. It was not LaPorte. And I just bet this woman is going to be the founder. I'm just really counting on it. So I'm, I'm excited.
Yeah, yeah, and when she was elected to the legislature in 1928, she was put on the Elections Commission, or Committee. And she made the recommendations about voter registration right away. She just immediately got, got into that. So she's someone for us to be very proud of, as well as Naomi Anderson, very proud of. The Preserving Women's Legacy Grant that I mentioned for a minute, that would give us, if we receive that, we will receive $40,000 in funding to, to commission a sculpture or a, you know, mural or mosaic or something to honor Naomi Anderson. So if we get that and we had to come up with, I worked on that committee, but we had to come up with a $40,000 match as well. So we'll have pretty, if we get that, we'll be able to do something really, you know, really special and that is worthy of a tribute to her, so. Okay, any, does the public have any comments? Okay, probably not. And our, the commissioner, I mean, the council, city council liaison, Sean Fitzpatrick is not here tonight. And any other comments from anyone? Is there anything else we need to go through?
Well, again, just one more thing, but I think most of the people here are aware of what I'm going to say because it's through a number of groups, not just the League of Women Voters. But there are many people involved in contacting the governor as well as the Secretary of State in the hopes of having a no fault or no excuse required absentee ballot. And we are very concerned about that, especially considering the dangers of COVID and the way it's rising at this time instead of dissipating. We did not expect this and so the fall might really be bad. We are encouraging everyone, the League of Women Voters of this state, and I know other organizations are encouraging that. that we contact the governor as well as the Secretary of State and encourage them to have and get started on it immediately, no-fault absentee ballots.
What's that call again, Joanne?
No-fault or no-excuse absentee ballots. It's what we had available during the primary, but it came out so late in the primary. We really need to get started sooner. And what we would love is to have all registered voters receive one of these forms to fill out and apply for it. It's done in other states. In fact, Michigan is all set already for their primary and their general election. They're all set already with their ballots. And we need to do that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Okay. Our next meeting will be held August 20th, 2020. I don't know yet the location, but we'll be in touch on that as we find out, probably much closer to that date. Okay, anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I saw move.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.